Hello Cohasset and welcome to another edition of Our Town. I'm Mark Di Giacomo, joined tonight by Pat Martin.
And welcome to our 2014 season as we kick off tonight with our first show. Can you believe we've been doing this stuff for ten years?
Been a long, long time.
Well, we've seen a lot of things in ten years, which I think is a nice backdrop for the guest that we have tonight, who has also been in politics for ten years, if not longer, who can talk about maybe the things that are new, things that have emerged, are they business now as usual, is this something that's going to be resolved in Cohasset as far as a new way of doing things? Who knows? What does the future bring? And, you know, looking at the past, I think is going to be interesting.
Well, as you say, luckily, we have the man with all of the answers tonight. Fred Coed. Fred, welcome.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you for coming on the show, Fred. So, I know that you've been in politics for a while, but just assuming that folks that are tuning in for the first time on our show don't know you from how many years ago that you got involved, give us kind of an update on who you are, how you got in politics, and what you brought to the role.
Sure. Well, let me go back to the beginning. I moved to Cohasset in 1961. I went into fifth grade at Deer Hill and went through the school system, graduated in 1969. Then I became interested in town politics when I had just been married, I had a young child, and had bought a house on Pleasant Street. And I had an opportunity to serve on the advisory board, also known as the Finance Committee. And I went on there about 1982. I spent four and a half years on there, the last two and a half as chairman. And then I was appointed to the Housing Authority by the governor for a five-year term. As you know, the governor has one seat on every housing authority, and there's five members here, one is appointed by the governor, the other four are elected. So I served five years on that. And then I think I had a little bit of a break and then ran for Water Commissioner in 1994. And I remember I was told that it was a very sleepy little board, and as you remember, I got elected in April, and in May, the water system collapsed.
[laughing]
And I served a three-year term, mostly two years as chairman on that. And one of the big accomplishments then was blasting down Farstav through 50% ledge to create a loop to come around the other end of Jewelsum Road and get some water down there where it was very in short supply. So then I went, took two years off and went to grad school and got a masters in public affairs. And then I was worried about what I was going to be doing with my time, and I was just about to graduate and ran for selectmen and got elected in 1999. So I'm in my fifth, three-year term.
Wow.
Let's flash forward to the present. Monday, the 13th of January, was Chris Senior's first day. What can you tell folks about Chris and the interviewing process? What impressed you about him?
I was impressed by his, the feedback I got from people that had worked with him in the past. And typically, no matter what level, whether they were cohorts in other towns, or somebody below, or somebody above his supervisors, they all felt he was very professional and easy to talk to, and they didn't feel any conflict. So it was, it was nice to hear that he worked well with everybody.
How important was it that the vote was unanimous?
Well, I think it, we've had a lot of split votes. As you know, I'm kind of in the middle on a lot of votes. And I think it was good for the town that the board unanimously came to a decision on who the next permanent town manager should be.
Now, his candidacy was brought forward by, as a result of the consultants that you brought in, the Collins organizations, correct?
Yes, the Collins Center affiliated with UMass, Boston. And they are in the business of finding town managers and town administrators across Massachusetts. They're not the only one that does it, but they have, a couple of people that do it full-time, so they're very familiar with.
And it seemed like that process kind of got mixed reviews, at least as far as people's points of view in the community. Were you, were you confident that this was a method that was important to use, that brought about great results?
Well, I think we did more in this search than we've ever done before. In the past, we had a consultant, but it was, it was an individual that just worked by himself and, you know. So this, we felt, was a broader organization to do it. And I think that the other unusual piece about this search was that at the point we came to discuss the selection committee, and normally with the way we've done it in town, it's been a bunch of citizens, everybody felt that the politics was such that it was better off to just turn that task over to the Collins Center. So town moderator Dan Evans graciously offered, after we asked him, and twisted his arm a little bit, to be the communicator, so that all communications between the Board of Selectmen and the town would have to go through him. And it would only be what was necessary while they conducted that narrowing down to five finalists.
But the effort to keep the politics out of it wasn't entirely successful. There were folks who were very surprised that Mike Melonowski was not one of the finalists.
Right.
The Collins representative couldn't, would not comment on why Mike was not one of the finalists. Do you know why he wasn't a finalist?
I, you know, you'd have to look at the town profile and what was specified in that. And if you look at when the selectmen discussed that, it was unanimous on everything except for an option A and B, and I can tell you what the two options were. Option B was a broader opening, and option A was, was a requirement that there be a minimum of seven years' experience under an elected board. So that's what it came down, it was a three to two vote for that. And Mike has 15 years' experience, and so I'm not clear beyond that what entailed the cutting.
So Mike could have been one of the finalists based on the criteria that was out there? Is that what you're saying?
I'm not, you know, I think the issue is serving under elected boards, yeah.
Okay. All right. And I've heard that Carver had almost an identical, I don't know if that's true enough, but identical criteria that they had put out. And yet, he was a finalist and ended up being the town administrator.
Yeah. And I think that's great for him. I'm happy to see him move on to a great position down there. It's roughly the same size town, and they happen to be looking for, they're really interested in a lot of economic development, which is his expertise. It's something in Cohasset, we're kind of built out, so there's not a lot of opportunity for more economic development here.
So I guess how, if Cohasset's criteria and Carver's were identical,
Yeah.
how does Mike make the cut in Carver and not make the cut in Cohasset, where he'd served as an acting town manager for two years? How does that happen?
Well, I suppose you'd have to look at the finalists in each group, and a lot of that's undisclosed, because a lot of people apply with the prerequisite that their names not be disclosed unless they are one of the five finalists. So we don't know what the pools were and who was involved and what the competition was, so it's not clear just what that was.
So notwithstanding the people who have noted this and raised some problems, your view is that politics was, you were successful in keeping politics out of the process?
As best we could. You know, I'm sure there's mixed views on it, but by and large, what I'm hearing, people feel it was an open, transparent process that was, they understood each step of the way, what was happening. It took, it took a long time. I think our first vote was in July, so it took a good six months. Normally, it's a three-month procedure, so it just, it just seemed to be plodding along with, you know, different issues popping up at different times, so.
Well, given the fact that a lot of politics is really perception, perceptions that people make from different points of views they get, or, you know, they think they know, but they don't know, they've never been in the field, or doing the work, or they're looking from the outside in, there seems to have been a perception that perhaps he, he as a person was, was being the logjam somewhat of moving the business of the town forward. If that was the case, and that was perceived, that maybe he, for whatever reason, is part of the constant splits, or there's the pro Mike, the against Mike, the those who wanted to change the Town Manager Act, those who didn't, some who felt that it was all personal based, do you think he could have continued in that job and really moved forward to do what needed to take place to get everybody back maybe on the right page or the same page?
Well, I don't know. I mean, we could speculate all night long, and I think at the end of the day, Cohasset's facing, you know, here we are today, we need to look forward. I don't think we make a lot looking in the past, except to, you know, examine why things didn't work out. We've had a history of, you know, a couple of recent town managers that, you know, we've looked at, you know, how do we get to that point? And so I think the whole process with the Collins Center was to try to do the best possible job we could in coming up with the next permanent town manager. Mike was fortunate to last two years in that position as an acting town manager. I used to joke with him, he's probably got the state record in, you know, an acting town manager, so he's, he did a lot for us in the fiscal area and other areas. So I think that, and I said to him, I said, you know, I'm confident that this two years' experience that he had here gave him a leg up on his, in Carver, application down there. And they, they were very impressed with him, they're very impressed with his economic development work, and I think it's a great fit down there, that's what they're looking for, they're really looking to expand that out, and I wish him the best of luck down there.
There was some discussion about a transition contract for Mike, and last I saw, that was pretty much nowhere. Can you, can you update us on where that stands?
Yeah, the board went back and forth on it within two executive session. The bottom line is that there seems to be consensus on the board to let the new town manager, Chris, work out whatever details he needs to. He's fully capable of working on the contracting, running it by town council. He happens to be an attorney himself, licensed to practice in front of the US Supreme Court, so I think he can handle those details. And, you know, we'll see what happens. Chris just got here this week, he's not absolutely sure what he needs. Mike has offered to help the town whatever way he can, so I'm sure things will work out.
So did Chris, did anyone ask Chris, hey, would you like us to have Melonowski available to you?
I talked to him, he's flexible about it, he just doesn't know exactly what he needs right now. He's just been, today's the second day in the job, so.
So if he gets his feet wet, and after a week or 10 days says, hey, listen, it would be nice if Melonowski could give me some hours, is that something that would work?
Some background, sure, yeah, absolutely, yeah. And we talked, I talked with Mike about what he'd get as a fair hourly rate, and I think the board's fine with that. You know, Mike has probably got a relationship with his former acting town manager down there, and all the town managers around here have reached out to Chris and have offered support, so. And Chris is offering to help his former town in North Hampstead on anything they need. So it's kind of a mutual society that's out there, they help each other out.
So the fact that this, this transition contract seemed to kind of get bogged down and get controversial, it's not an anti-Mike Melonowski issue, it's really, does Chris want it? Is it, is it necessary?
I think if he needs it, he absolutely will utilize it. It's, it's more now up to him. I mean, the board kind of hashed around what to do, and, you know, Chris wasn't involved in those discussions, so it's difficult to know, you know, to speak for him when he's not there.
Right, right.
Given what the Board of Selectmen has gone through in the past couple of years with what looked like a, you know, a swinging pendulum of two different types of administration styles that you had, you know, well, really, three. You had Bill Griffin leave, where everybody seemed like he was an easy guy to work with, everybody was happy, but then we found out that we probably needed to do a little bit more, paying attention on certain things with the finances. Then you had Mr. Coughlin come in, who seemed like he wanted to exact his rights to hire department heads and, and work as an independent person. And then Mike kind of, Melonowski coming in and swinging the other way to kind of, whatever, bring the ship back aright. Does the Board of Selectmen now have a better idea of what they're looking for in a town manager as far as the tasks and how they think that they can work with this person to the best?
Well, I think the important thing, there's been a common theme throughout, has been the importance of communication, just being appraised at what's going on, that's important. And there's a clear delineation between job responsibilities. You know, the policy level is at the board, the administrative level, the town managers, the chief administrative officer, not the chief executive officer, the selectmen are the executive officers of the town. So, so there's an administrative level, and, and so as long as policy's coming up and the selectmen aren't micromanaging the administration, I think that works for a nice balance between everybody. So there's certain times that it's clearly under the Town Manager Act responsibility to the town manager, but I think the board has always worked best when the town manager conferred with the board to see what their feelings were on important decisions. So that's kind of not always easy to implement or to do, but I think that's what makes a nice balance and a good relationship. And, you know, it's all about relationships, I think.
One of the first major tasks, I would think, is the police chief. Have you talked to Chris about the timing and your ideas of how that should go forward?
Well, I, just briefly, you know, I took the position that it should be posted and there should be a search and a process similar to the town manager's search. And I also took the position that, you know, the decision should go with the permanent town manager, so now he's in place. He's just getting his feet on the ground here, and, you know, we'll talk further about the timing of that. Police Department seems to be running fine right now, so I don't think it's like a screaming issue to address immediately, but it does need to be addressed in fairness to everybody, so.
So are you, based on your conversations, or are they just too preliminary, is your sense, that sense it really is up to him, that that's what he will do? He will post the job, do a wide-open search?
I haven't, I haven't had honestly that conversation with him yet, you know.
But that's what you'd like to see?
For myself, yeah. I'm just speaking for myself, not for the board.
Understood, understood. So you don't see it as being a need to get going quickly, but, I mean, roughly, when would you like to see it, understanding that it'll be up to Chris?
Personally, I think sometime in February is, you know.
Okay, so next month?
Yeah.
Okay. So it's not something to put off till the summer or something like that?
Right, right, yeah.
It's something that should get going, all right. And I know, of course, that was just one of many controversies you've dealt with recently.
Yeah.
And there, there seemed to be a lot of support for Bill Quigley in the town, or at least a lot of vocal support.
Yes, yeah.
In public, it seemed like the issue when, when he was appointed by Melonowski and the selectmen rejected the appointment, that the issue with the selectmen was process as opposed to the person. Is that your understanding, that now if a proper process is going through, I mean, I know you can't prejudge, you've got to see the candidate. But was that really the problem, or did people have some, some issues with them?
Well, if you look at the history, back in, I'm going to say December a year ago, the selectmen made it clear to Mike that a search should be done. We understood Mike had a candidate that he thought was really preferred, in a sense, but the board still said, Mike, we need to do a search. And we went out and did a search. Now, I personally had a problem with the posting because I thought it was too specific to a candidate, and I didn't think that was fair. And so the board unanimously voted, that was, you know, selectman chairman Carlson, Lee Jenkins, everybody voted to restart the search because of that, because of the issues that I brought up. So a second search eventually got going, and then by this time, we're starting to come into the town manager's search, and then I had wanted a search that included a, an assessment center, which would be, the process there would be, you'd bring in three, four, or five police chiefs from across the state that would assess the final four or five candidates. And, you know, make sure they're all qualified to be chief, or if there are any issues, there would be any reading out done then. But I also wanted an independent search firm because I felt that the way the posting was written, it showed too much bias towards a candidate, and that, in all fairness to the town, that we needed an independent search done. The board did not go along with that option. They went along with the assessment center, I was able to convince them of that. So I ended up voting against the search because I didn't think it was going to result in a fair search again. And then what happened subsequently, two weeks later, Martha changed her mind about the search and voted to reconsider, and that's when the search stopped. And the idea was that this would wait for the permanent town manager. And at that time, we thought the permanent town manager would be about three months away once the search started. So that's the way it was left, that the search was on hold, and we felt as a board, we didn't say, you know, quote-unquote, "This is a policy," but it was clear to me that that was the intent of the vote, that the board wanted a policy of holding that decision until the permanent town manager was selected.
Well, Mike was on the show, sitting right where you were sitting, and I, I asked him, Mike, you went ahead, you selected Bill, knowing full well, didn't you, that the board was not going to approve him because they wanted a search? And they wanted to wait for the new town manager.
Yeah.
But you did it anyway. Why would you do it? And he said, I didn't know, I didn't know that. He said, I, I, I had no idea that they felt that way, that they needed a search.
Well, Mike, I remember the day--
Words of that effect, because I was surprised. I kind of knew that reading the Mariner.
Well, August 20th was my youngest daughter's birthday, and I had weekly breakfast meetings with Mike, and it was her birthday, we were having breakfast at Stars, and he told me he was going to appoint the police chief that night. And I said, Mike, please reconsider with no search? And so, you know, it is what it is. It went on, it went on for a month, and then ultimately, it went to a vote, and the board voted not to go. And the reason I voted the way I did was I felt that, as I explained to Mike, that the same candidate, whether he goes through a full search or not, is going to, day one in his job, the candidate that's gone through a full search is going to be in a much better position, because there's no questions about Chris Senior, how he got to where he is today. Everybody saw the whole process, there's nobody questioning that. You know, I was concerned that if Chief Quigley had been appointed, that it would just drag down his administration with questions about the process.
Legitimacy of the process.
Yeah.
Yeah, it just seemed like an unnecessary controversy and so forth, the whole thing. But, but again, do you feel that it was only about process? Do you, do you feel Quigley has support on the board, subject to seeing who else is out there? Or what is your sense?
Well, I stated I've supported him in every move that he's made down there, you know, the deputy chief piece, the whole thing. It wasn't about the individual, it's about the process. These are public jobs, it's not the private sector. This isn't a little corporation that you and I own, it's owned by everybody in the whole town. And they expect that these high-level jobs are going to be publicly posted, that there'll be a fair search process, and that the best candidate will win. And so if you, if you just throw the process out and say, no, this is who we're selecting, I think it, it just doesn't give credence to the, the type of credibility that somebody in that important position needs ultimately to do their job.
So if we go through, which we will, I assume, go through the process now, Bill Quigley is one of the finalists. Obviously, you want to reserve your right to see who all the finalists are, but can you see yourself voting for Bill?
I vote for the, the best candidate that comes through the interviews, and, you know, I'm looking, if we do that process, and Chris hasn't decided yet, but, you know, do an assessment center where we have the police chiefs from across the state come in and vet everybody and tell us that, yes, you've got high-qualified candidates here. And then on TV, publicly, you know, interviews where everybody will see how everybody does under, you know, interviews are not necessarily the easiest thing to do on public TV, and, you know, so, so it's kind of a vetting process that I think everybody has to go to. It's the same as running for school committee, as you two know, or running for selectmen or water commissioner. There's a whole process, you come out in public, you air your ideas out, people ask you questions, and you run a campaign, and the townspeople decide at the end who's best. If, you know, the selectmen were self-appointed, would, you know, it just doesn't work that way.
Well, you make a very articulate point and are able to sum up, seemingly, you know, ease what the, what the job of the selectmen is, the benefits of the process, trying to serve the community in the best way with the most information and through diligence. But then how does that explain, though, with your other fellow Board of Selectmen members, that there seems to have been such a divide recently on how the board, or members on the board, feel that you should proceed? I mean, currently, again, there seems like, a lot of people feel in town that there's two sides to this board. There's three, you know, you, Karen, Martha, and then there's Diane, and there's Steve. And there seems to be a fault line somewhere where things fall along those divisions. How do you explain that happening?
Well, I think, number one, I believe that all five members of the board have the best interest of Cohasset at heart. Having said that, I think everybody looks at things differently. It's, it's like national politics, or O.J. Simpson, I mean, you name it, people see the same thing, and depending where they're coming from, they, they see it differently, or they come to a different conclusion.
Well, you're not saying, which I think a lot of people might be afraid of, that now people are just going to vote on party lines or by party groupings, anything like that?
Oh, no, no, I didn't mean to interject partisanship into it, I'm just saying--
I think that's just a fear.
That it's, it's just an example of how people can look at the same thing and have different values that they prioritize. In my case, I felt, you know, a public search was going to give strength to whoever ended up in that position, it's going to make them easier to do their job, and there wouldn't be any questions about their authority or how they got the position. So I just happen to value that a lot.
Do you think you're old-school in some ways? I mean, one of the things I'm thinking about, too, when you're talking about the police chief, it seemed like it was kind of new method of politics to do a citizen's petition to advocate for an appointed position. Was that something you've seen before? Is that kind of the face of now, how people get involved and do--
Well, I, I felt that, I don't think political campaigns belong in job searches for important positions such as police chief. And I had privately, you know, a town manager in a surrounding town tell me, you did absolutely the right thing, you know, stick to your guns. And that's the way, you know, maybe it's because I've, you know, been immersed in government for so long, I also worked for state government in Boston, so it's just that, you know, these jobs, public jobs, there's just no question they're going to be posted. And so that's all part of the process that you expect in the public sector.
The lawn signs and so forth in connection, that, I just, that was just kind of bizarre. I mean, I've never seen anything like that.
Well, as I was driving around, I couldn't help but get the feeling that since two selectmen were one way and two were the other, and I was in the middle--
Signs were there for you.
--that was designed to influence my vote, as I, you know, there hadn't been an appointment, but for a month, people were being told I was blocking the appointment. And Mike clearly knew where I stood on the appointment. So I frankly don't understand why he went forward with it.
Well, that, I guess, that's what I was trying to articulate before, was it was just kind of baffling to me why you'd go forward when you've got a good man like Bill Quigley, who now, on his record, has a rejection by a Board of Selectmen that he's going to need to explain--
It's unfortunate, yeah.
--potentially in the future, as opposed--
I think Bill just got caught up in some politics, unfortunately, for him, that was beyond his control.
The, what Pat was referring to as far as the divide, a lot of people, including, I think, myself, kind of trace it back to the Conservation Commission massacre, or call it what you will. And it seems, just when you think things might get better, they seem to get worse, and we really haven't fully recovered. And you can call the two camps, the Coughlin camp, the Melonowski camp, or whatever, but it's, they seem very real, and it almost seems when an issue comes up and you ask someone, well, how do you feel on it? First, they want to know, how do the people in my camp feel about it? Because whatever it is, I'm going to go along. And there doesn't seem to be an awful lot of cross-agreement. Do you see the same thing, Fred?
Well, I think, I think we're seeing a lot of polarization, I think the town needs to have, needs to move forward from that. And, you know, the nutting seminar, I don't know if you had a chance to watch that, but I found--
Heard about that.
The board, uh, re- I think really got a lot out of it. That was one of the great things that Mike brought forward, was bringing, uh, Mr. Nutting in. Uh, he's a town manager in Franklin, Mass., and he also does these seminars on the side. And, and, uh, he, you know, was saying how important it is sometimes to disagree and have healthy arguments, and have a vote, but then even vote unanimously, like, uh, one of the first things that would've happened had Chris Senior's vote not been unanimous was to, to make it unanimous, and hopefully, the board would've done that.
Mm-hmm.
So, I think there needs to be, um, a willingness to disagree but not disagree, be disagreeable.
Mm-hmm.
And, um, you know, it's good to have diversity on boards. I, I've, I've seen, uh, over the years, um, the advi- the advisory board, for instance, that, um, whenever it got too lopsided towards one way of thinking, would make decisions that weren't fully vetted and then lose on the floor of town meetings. So, so it's important to have a good balance on the advisory board, and they make good decisions. And so, you have some healthy debate on the selectmen. I think, I think, uh, some people take it a little too personally, and maybe you gotta be able to release that at, at the end of the vote and move forward and, and do what's in the best interest of the town, which is tackle these difficult deci- decisions.
These, these two camps, um, there's a lot of folks who have the perception that you were in one camp and now you're in the other. Um, uh, is that because you were willing to listen and change your mind, or is that because there's political reasons, or-
Well, I think, I think-
Or is that just not true?
Politics makes strange bedfellows, and I, I, I like to think I'm an independent thinker who looks at issues differently. You know, Cat Dam issue, I think, a lot of complex land use issues there, uh, there's grandfather uses in there, uh, still a complex issue that may come up. It's been settled now for a while, but what seemed to be overriding there was the private property issues. If you look at the old history of Cohasset, uh, right where Cunningham Bridge is, there used to be what was called Cuba Dam, and that whole little harbor was a cow pasture. And it's actually at the Norfolk County Registry of Deeds, uh, maps showing it all divided up into private land. So, you get even in further now into where Cat Dam is, and all that land is actually on our assesses' maps divided, and the land under the water is privately owned. The dam is on private property, so it makes a lot of complex issues. When you look at where we're controlling water in Straits Pond, we're controlling, uh, we don't, we're controlling it through an automatic dam. Uh, how far, we don't allow it to go all the way down, and we don't allow it to flood, so we're controlling both ends of it. Jacob's Meadow, we're doing the same, well, we don't care if it goes out, but we do care if it floods, so we're controlling that. And, and where Cat Dam is, the concern there was noxious odors on the mud flats, and, and the neighborhood there, it's been going on for a hundred years, has preferred to have it, um, the water covering that, except at certain times, to avoid that, uh, environmental issue.
You said we shouldn't, uh, we shouldn't look back, other than to hopefully learn from our mistakes.
Yes.
Again, um, if we trace all this back, the Cat Dam issue seemed to involve the Conservation Commission.
Yeah.
If, if, if you had to do that over again, would you have done that differently?
I think so. I, I mean, I, I, I learned a lot from that, there's some things I definitely regret about that. Uh, was not an easy position to be. Um, I, I, but I, you know, the other side was, I thought, saw, you know, the town maybe spending half a million dollars to do some salt marsh restor- restoration on private property.
And, and I'm talking more about the way the Conservation Commissioners were, um, relieved or not reappointed-
Yeah.
And these folks came in all once, seemed to be in one group.
Well, the, the biggest thing we learned was that, that those appointments really belonged to the town manager at the time. So, had, we realized that, the town manager would've met the appointments, and selectmen would've just been, uh, either vetoing them or not, so it would've probably been a totally different outcome. Now, under the new Town Manager Act, they're, they're in the selectmen's purview, and, uh, so, uh, but yeah, I, I would've done it differently. I, exactly how I don't know, 'cause it was, it was a very frustrating issue for me. I felt that, um, I sat in the audiences, um, during the Concom hearings, um, you know, they sit in judgment of the whole thing. I sympathize with many people in the audience that felt they weren't being heard, so, so it was, it was tough all around.
But, but I gotta bring up a point, I mean, there was a, it wasn't as grand a scale, but there was another similar issue shortly thereafter with the appointment of Paul Carlson to the Cable Advisory Committee-
Yeah.
Which, of course, I'm on, which was a shock, which, uh, you know, for a couple of hours there rendered us almost unable to operate-
Yeah.
Because we lost our chief financial officer, and that was a one that was really hard to explain, and thinking process on how-
I, I feel bad about that. I voted for Paul. Unfortunately, Steve Garmar was in San Francisco-
Right.
And wasn't there to do, uh, weigh in, so it became a split vote.
Mm-hmm.
And that's, um, sometimes I, you know, I think that sometimes you have to have the ability to count votes ahead of time, and maybe that, that appointment should've been held a week.
Right. But I think those, those type of actions are, again, they fuel, whether it's a paranoia or a worry, or, uh, you know, a, a lack of faith in politics these days, because it's so divided, that makes people suspicious and fuels the whole thing about, "Oh, it's, it really is a divide now, either, either you're in or you're out," or, you, you know, that type of thing.
Well, let me just, I mean, you, you mentioned me being in one camp and another. You know, Karen, uh, Quigley and I disagreed on Cat Dam before, um, and she voted on the other side of that issue there, on, on Paul Carlson. So, I, I, I see myself as more in the middle and looking at each separate issue and deciding what I think is best for the town. And I think if you, um, I hope that I have a reputation of, of using that frame on what I'm looking at. And so, um, there's been people that have disagreed with me on major issues, and, but have told me, you know, "I disagree with you, but I understand that you, you know, you have a principle that you're looking at." And so, I, um, like to feel that I am making principled decisions, whether people agree with everything or not. It's very difficult to be in the Board of Selectmen for fourteen and a half years and have you agree with every decision I've made, because it's been a lot of difficult decisions. And so, um, and I'm not perfect.
Your fifth term is coming up, you're up for reelection in April, will you run for reelection?
I'll probably decide that when papers come out. Right now, it's, um, it's still up in the air.
And Diane, is, is she up too?
Yes, she is, yeah.
Okay, and I, I've heard through the grapevine that she is running for reelection. I don't know that she's made any announcement or anything like that, but, um-
Well, we have a very active grapevine in Cohasset.
Yes, 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 we do.
So, there's all kinds of rumors they're going around.
And let me, and let me ask you about the, uh, the, the rotten grapes on that grapevine, which is the, um, some of the blogs and, um, uh, just internet generally and so forth. Um, in talking to people who have thought about running for office, uh, I've, I've talked to several who've said, "There's no way I would ever do that. Why would I put myself, my family, with these people, oftentimes anonymous people, saying terrible things, um, and making things up and so forth? For what? For a volunteer job? Or why would I do that?"
Yeah.
Is that, is, is that a big problem?
It absolutely is a big problem. That's one of my major concerns, because we should be encouraging people to become involved in town government. And, um, you know, one of the few things you really have is your reputation. So, I absolutely sympathize with everybody. I mean, I, you know, um, I made a difficult decision about not attending this special town meeting. I had a conflict, I explained that to the board, "I have a conflict, I won't be there." Now, I think after twenty-seven years, twenty-seven and a half years, in, in four different positions in this town, I've got a pretty good attendance record. And, and frankly, uh, the issues at that special town meeting were not controversial, they were pretty much rubber stamp, but, you know, we're not a city council where we have a city council meeting every week that is in fact the, the town meeting and can approve these major decisions. We meet once or twice a year. Uh, but I had an opportunity to help out in the community, uh, in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts that we all care about, uh, that had been suffering, um, a lot of corruption, an opportunity to help get, change the day up there. And so, um, a, a friend called me, said he needed help. When I found out which side it was on, I, I offered to help. If it had been the other side, I absolutely would not have gone. But that got blown up so much, it was on the front page of the ledger.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, when have you ever seen that before? Somebody's non-attendance at a special town meeting being a front-page news story for the entire South Shore. So, I mean, I just go back to, uh, the, the, the Quigley appointment. I had a, a meeting when I came back from the Cape, uh, right before Labor Day, and the individual will remain unnamed, but he told me, "If you don't make that appointment, the newspapers are gonna come after you."
Wow.
And I said, "Well, I'm making a decision on what I think is right. If they're gonna come after me, um, have, they're, they're gonna come after me, there's nothing I can do about that." But that's some of the type of intimidation that's been going on around here. And so, absolutely, I understand why people don't wanna be involved. Why would you expose yourself to that?
Right. Well, they always laugh in saying Cohasset politics is a blood sport, but given that you've been involved for so long, i- i- is this a particularly bad year? Has it gotten worse?
It's never been like this.
Okay.
Cohasset, the Cohasset that I grew up in and got involved in the early eighties on the Finance Committee, et cetera, our biggest goal was to stay out of the newspapers. If we had things that needed to be settled, they were settled behind closed doors or one-on-one. Never went to the newspapers. You know, we're, we're talking about the reputation of the town, you know, what, you know, one of the things we've always worked for that I think this town has understood better than many, is that, you know, for instance, the connection between good schools and retaining property values. And Cohasset was the only community in Massachusetts that didn't drop its, its property values during this recent recession. Everybody else took a hit. And I attribute that to a good school system and a, and a good reputation. So, when I see individuals jeopardizing our reputation for political gain, for whatever reason, I have a problem with that, and I think it should stop. And I, I ask the town, "Let's move forward."
Well, when you talk to Chris Senior during the interviews and, and the other folks that were there, I mean, obviously, these people, this is their lives, this is their careers, they're going to research, and it doesn't take too much, um, to, to dig in and see some of the ugliness-
Right, right.
-that has been prevalent. Um, what did these guys, uh, say to you? Uh, did they say, "What's going on here?"
Well, there's two, there's two levels of it. One level is that, uh, like Grady Miller, great candidate, um, he had a shift in the board, you know? The, the board that he was at, they, they're five, I think it was five members, they could all be replaced in one year. We don't have like a rotating cycle like the US Senate or our selectmen have, where only two or one person is up every three years. So, um, they can come in and things, they're out of a job, you know? So, there's that level of their understanding how they have to relate with, with their, um, elected officials. And the other thing is, you know, what level of, who wants to come into this type of atmosphere? And, uh-
Well, that's what I'm saying, it must've bothered the, these folks, and yet they still were interested.
Yeah.
They take it as a challenge, uh-
Well, I think, I think what you have is, um, people that were attracted to the challenge. And, and was it a diminished pool? Quite possibly it was, uh, which is unfortunate.
We, we did have a lot fewer than we expected applicants, correct?
Yeah.
And you, and you, you think that that might've been-
Well, I'm, I'm sure it was a factor. Um, you know, how much of a factor, I don't know, because I, I never saw who actually applied. You know, the Collins Center has all the information, it's been kept confidential, such as their credit check reports and all that other stuff, the background investigations. So, we don't really know who was in there, we have like a, a number, and, um-
But the number was small.
It was smaller than an average community gets, yeah.
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 So, is the problem surmountable? I mean, i- i- is it a task too large for him to come in and somehow be the peacemaker? Try to bring the two sides together to get folks back, to focus their efforts on what's good of the town? Or is it gonna, is he gonna step in, you think, to immediately people pulling him in different directions, say, "No, our way," or, "No, our way"?
It remains to be seen, but I have, I have all the confidence in the world in Chris Senior that he'll be able to, uh, move forward and take the town forward to its next level.
I wanna go back, 'cause you, you mentioned the, um, the town meeting. And, and there was also a, a Board of Selectmen's meeting. I mean, I know you-
Yeah.
You posted as a meeting, 'cause you were all there.
Yeah.
But you actually conducted business that day too, right?
Right, yeah.
And, and if I, if I understood, because it's been a thing, it's been out there. Uh, you indicated that the board knew you weren't going to be there that day?
Yeah.
Okay, because the impression that certainly I received-
Well, I said, I-
With the Mariner, was that they were surprised. "Where's Fred?"
Yeah.
"And should we vote now? Should we wait? Or what, you know, what, what do we-"
No, I, I had written them an email explaining that I had a conflict, and so they were aware I wasn't gonna be there. I encouraged them to take action, 'cause I, I felt they were, uh-
That was narrowing the finalists?
Narrowing from five to three, yeah.
Okay, that was the issue.
And, and I was, um, confident that whatever three were picked, that I would be happy with at least one of those candidates, so, um-
So, they knew that you weren't gonna be there?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. And, um, and again, you, you've emphasized your, your attendance record, um, which, what kind of percentage of selectmen meetings would you say you've been able to attend over all these years?
Well, yeah, I, I-
Ninety percent, or is it-
More than that, I would think, yeah. I, I, I think I only miss maybe three or four meetings a year, if that, yeah.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm, okay.
Yeah.
So, moving forward, if you can anticipate that everything falls into place nicely and everybody's agreeing and working as a team, what issues do you see in Cohasset that in the future have to be addressed within the short period of time, aside from the police chief?
The short period of time, well, I did make a list here of, of, uh, I, I did feel that I'm here more representing the board than myself, so I just wanted to, uh, quickly go through the priorities of the board. Uh, one is financial management, and we can go in, uh, two is the HR personnel management issue, um, three is policies, procedure, and bylaw review, uh, four is the permanent town manager search, which is done.
Mm-hmm.
Um, five was, uh, issues around town council and legal services, how we're utilizing them. Um, six is the community communications plan, which was Diane Kennedy's, um, you know, reaching out to better communicate with the townspeople. Um, seven is improved employee relationships between the board and employees and unions. Uh, eight, and some of these, at this point, are more mine, uh, of-
That's true.
Putting together from everybody's, uh, uh, strategic plan for the community, uh, which I think Diane also brought up, which was having a community charrette to just see where we wanna go from here. Uh, there's ongoing issues around harbor health, we have dredging scheduled, uh, education, which I mentioned earlier, is very important to the town. Uh, there's the second amended judgment, which just got extended for six months, and then, uh, the Town Manager Act, which is just about to get signed by the governor, I believe. So, it's been, um, a process at the State House. So, let, let me just go into financial management, 'cause that was our first, um, you know, obviously we're in the budget season. Uh, Mike prepared a preliminary budget, we're looking at that, Chris is just getting in, into that. Um, it's a process of its own, you know, it's gone to the advisory committee, um, and that will, as you know, take on its own life up until the annual town meeting at the end of April. Um, we're really focused on the OPEB liability issue. It's a complex issue, we have a committee that's coming in the end of the month to give an, another report on it. Um, we have, uh, asked for a five-year balanced budget plan, Mike did that before he left. Um, and Mike also did get the extended six-month on the second amended judgment, so we're So we're very glad that he worked right-
What is left on the second amended?
There's a few houses to hook up, and there's-
In the Little Harbor.
Yeah, and there's also the issue of, as you know, historically in the town, and interesting, this is the issue that pulled me into town politics, was the old small pipe, big pipe debate.
Yeah.
And which was, you know, the town was looking at two and a half million gallon federally-funded sewer treatment plant down off of Smith Place, decided against it, decided to keep improving the treatment plant we have, and then we extend it into Hull, et cetera. But we had been controlled by whether you've got a perk or not, or whether you're on sewerage. And we do need to, the sewer department needs to create some sewer districts now that will define where the growth in the, goes in Cohasset vis a vis the treatment plant.
But aren't we at capacity at the treatment plant now?
Well, the issue there is, we are, but there's always new and innovative filters, et cetera, coming in. So as these new scientific methods come along, we may pick up a hundred thousand, you know, where you have the infiltration inflow issue of, of water seeping in the pipes. If we can eliminate that, we get more. So there's, there's a question of what, what framework we want to put around it. And personally, I think it's an environmental framework. We should be protecting our water supplies and our coastal waters.
But under the judgment itself, what are we required? Just a few more houses and we're out from under that?
Well, let me give you an example. If we don't have some better-defined districts, and we already do kind of, we have the Hillside District and North Cohasset's going to Hull, that type, but, but further delineating it, let's say we found another 200,000 gallons capacity right now, the town may say, look at, everybody that's been in town for 50 years paying taxes to build that plant, et cetera, should have first right to that. Not, say, a new developer that wants to come in, put a hundred condos on a piece of property that can perk-
Right.
...and cut in line from these homeowners that have been waiting and waiting and waiting, like up in Beachwood, for probably what they feel like forever for some relief. So I think the town's got to look now at a comprehensive plan to how to address the rest of the town. We've been dealing with the state and the coastal waters, as you know, that's more than a 30-year suit, where we were threatened of a fine of five or $10,000 a day.
Right.
And that would have just devastated our schools and everything. So we, you know, it's been a long road, lot of twists and turns, and we're almost to the finish, but we, you know, the Little Harbor area has come online, and it does take a couple of years for people to get used to. I lived on the hillside where-
Paying the bills. It takes a couple of years to get used to the bills.
Yeah, yeah, paying the bills and-
Being in the Little Harbor, I can tell you that.
Yeah.
But, well, but the judgment itself, I know there may be some other things. Are you saying the creation of these districts is part of satisfying the judgment, or is that just something that we should do?
Well, we have to have everybody hooked up, and we don't have that yet.
On Little Harbor?
Yeah.
Right.
And there's also, from the town's perspective, of how are we protecting that asset down there to make sure it gets used-
The treatment plant.
The treatment plant, that future growth goes to where the townspeople want it. So the town, it will go to town meeting, be debated, and town meeting will decide where it wants to allocate this capacity.
We're running out of time, Fred. We're here January of 2014. January of 2015, headline in the Mariner about the year in review for the Board of Selectmen. What are the headlines? What do you hope the headlines will be?
I hope it's the new town managers, a great success, and that the divide has been healed-
And peace.
...and Cohasset is back to business, yeah.
Seems like a good call.
Well, good luck with that, Fred.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming on.
Thank you very much for coming on.
Thank you very much.
All right, terrific. All right, and that's it for tonight's show. We are, we do have a call in to Chris Senior, and hoping that we'll be able to get him in here within the next couple of weeks, introduce him to the town, hear some of his ideas for how he would like to see Cohasset run.
Right. And then the election seasonals begin shortly after that, and away we'll go.
So we're going to be ramping up. Please keep an eye on both the TV and hopefully in the Mariner for our future shows. But for now, I'm Mark DiGiacomo. For Pat Martin and our entire wonderful crew of students here, good night.